Speaking of budget, I just, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we had a discussion internally at our last department meeting. Just kind of working out just roughly to get some of our meetings in order. Something Stan's got some vacation at the end of September. So we'll try to get Public Works in for those of you on the Public Works Committee. We'll set up something for late September and then hopefully we can get together with all involved, Sam, Jamie, and Mike, for a public safety meeting then in early October. And then we'll sneak finance in there, you know, previous to basically someone was going to the lead meeting in the twentieth. And then as we talked last time to them, we will have the budget hearing will be scheduled for the seventeenth of November, which should give us plenty of time to get our information on the treasury and get the bills up. So that's again, just kind of the ten of the schedules. Look at your calendars, please. Those that are on those committees and if there are any dates in those rough, rough timeframes, let us know. You'll be hearing a little more from us on that. And then kind of a final one from some future meetings coming up. I think I did share at one of the future or past meetings, I shouldn't say, that the Gulf Horse has asked for a loan to remodel their kitchen, basically. Two and above thirty thousand dollars, like give or take. And so we're kind of pushing that meeting off just a little bit to get some more information from them and get some folks lined up. So at this point, we're scheduling that meeting for the eighth, that next, before the next council meeting, the eighth. So that's the Economic Development Committee, so per Matt Terry and the mayor. If you guys, if that works for you, say five, five thirty before the next meeting, you can choose for that. Any conflicts, just let us know. Otherwise, that's all I have.
And if we know Stan's taking a lot of time, that there's not a safety area within how many yards of your stand?
Up east this time.
Oh, that's east, that's safe. Was it so many, so many yards of your home? One other thing on the budget situation, we did get our preliminary levy, or not levy, excuse me. Equalized valuation has gone up. Of course, we're still under levy limits. So the one thing about it is, but there is more value to tax in the city. So as far as the, things like the, so numbers wise, it still looks, I mean, we should be okay in as far as that goes.
And most of that was just economic. We didn't see a lot of new construction that put that up. It was just economically related, roughly from one hundred and five million to one hundred and ten million.
Yeah, so that makes it obviously a little bit easier to budget, but obviously still dealing with budget limits and so on. Any questions for the city administration? Okay, Police Department, Chief Bridgeway?
Quick report, the truck, we took that up on Thursdays, we're up there. They're gonna be working on that over the next few weeks. So hopefully we can get that up and running quickly because we started having a little bit of issues with the silver slot. Took it into Adams, need some new plugs and some tie rod work and just have some issues we gotta take care of with that. But we don't want to, don't want to take it out of service right now to get those done. So hopefully that truck will be done soon and I can quit talking about it. Also, trunk or treat, they put a hole out there and Christina's been in touch with me and it's looking like that's going to be on Saturday, October thirtieth. So we'll talk to Christina. She actually submitted the permits and stuff for street closures and things. So we'll be talking about that sometime during the next few council meetings to get that approved. And then just an update on our part-time officers. Anna Makunda finished her training, she's by herself. This was about a week and a half ago. And then the last week, Miguel Valdivino, he finished his training as well. So they're both on their own now. We're still gonna give them an occasional training shift if we find some things that we want them to work on. There's some weekends that John is on. We're gonna put him with John just to keep giving him a little more training. But they are on their own and doing well for us, so. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the Police Department? Okay, next we'll move on to the Fire Department. First monthly report, Chief King?
I got much to report on the drone stuff we talked about last month. Actually, it's going forward faster than we thought. The drones will be here, what, a month probably?
They're, they've been shipped, so.
So we won't be in service with them until we get certified to fly them. But that program's rolling faster than we thought, which is good with things happening with COVID. And the other thing is on Saturday, I'm sure most of you heard, seen the stuff on TV and the news with Arcadia Fire Chief lost his life. So we'll be going down there staffing their station on Saturday morning from seven AM to one PM. So it'll be my command vehicle and then one other truck will be staffing their station with another department from seven to one doing their shift for them. So that's all I have for updates.
And that's been, I know, obviously, you guys work together. We needed help when we had that.
Yeah, we need help, so there was.
So on this, it's always.
It's a great thing. Then their whole department concentrates on what they need to concentrate on. And then us will sit back at their station, staff their station for, from seven. They're splitting up, six hour shifts, so we were doing seven AM to one PM.
How many people, Jamie, on the shift?
I don't know. I haven't seen schedule. I just signed this up for, the whole schedule's not completed yet for down there. So I'm not sure what they have. I committed, I sent a message out to our guys, committed the four guys plus myself. And then they added us to their schedule. It's a lot of work to coordinate all that because you need this, there'll probably be ten different departments staffing. And we got ten different people, trucks, man bower, make sure all the appropriate tools are there because they'll have their trucks. So you gotta make sure the trucks that are coming have the proper stuff. It adds the, the big truck.
Any other questions for the Fire Department? Next, a presentation by Chief King regarding the ladder truck.
I'll start out, so half of you guys have seen this already. The guys that have seen it, the slides are the same except for I have two new items. The worst, start with the worst news first. There was a two percent price increase, August, in August here. So they're hoping that two percent will ride out now until the end of the year for when, if we decide to go forward. So that, I haven't got an updated actual price, but he said that it was flat across the board, two percent will hold up just because steel prices and everything is up. So, and then the second update I have, I wanted to know if anybody here, they're actually gonna have a demo truck. It's the first time in a little while they've had one. It's gonna come off the assembly line sometime in the end of September to early October. He is gonna come out, but I did wanna know if you guys, as a council, wanted to come up at the night, let him come up, bring the truck up.
Well, I think we should be aware, yeah, we can give the opportunity, you know.
So I think in fact, if you guys have interest in it, I'll let you know the height, date, and night time.
Sure.
It probably won't be a council meeting then, so we'll sort it up afterward and man up that way. You know, it hasn't even come off the line. So the picture, as you can see, that's what we're looking at getting. For the, a lot of questions that rose last time, the truck itself is actually a single axle. It's not a typical heavy duty tandem axle long truck. So you see, it's only got a single rear axle. It's a medium duty ladder, not a heavy duty ladder. So it's basically the smallest ladder truck you can get and still be functional for what we need to have it up. The red part, the truck part, is still a, an engine or a bumper truck. And then the ladders, as you can see on top, is still done. So the red part is pretty much typical of being any ladder truck. It's just adding a ladder. Examples, everybody wants to know why, Oakley Fire went live. So getting a ladder truck in is, and we're gonna run it, that was another question, is we're gonna run it as the first truck out. So it's not like it's gonna sit at the fire hall and it's only gonna get used when there's, you know, a marked fire, a special fire. That truck will go out on every single structure fire call and be rammed as an engine and the ladder. And it's getting it out there, getting it set up right away. Increased potential for, you know, technical, successful technical outcomes. When you can get the truck up, get water up high, get it down into where you need to get it to. There's a huge versus us standing on the ground, lopping water up and over and hoping you're hitting where you want it to hit. So it's a lot more successful outcomes using one. Accessing a second level higher. And why do we need to go up there, rescue people, venting, and also fire tag? We do, depending on the call, we do spend quite a bit of time on the roof, we can. The stability control, the steel, that and do the high angles and the slipperiness. It's a good thing for the people putting all this steel in their homes as roofing. It's great, it lasts longer. But in the winter, and when it's wet, that stuff for us to try to get on is like slippery as slippery. So it gets very dangerous. And for large structure fires, we can use it for reaching outdoor stuff, for water rescue if you need it to. Style fires, which you won't have in the city, but we do in the rural. And the last thing there, reduce staff needs. So I got a picture coming up here later on. By reducing staff, like what we're talking about here is typically to set up a rough ladder. You know, to get up onto the roof, you need a minimum of three guys. Where if you had a ladder truck, you only need one to open the basket of the truck on the ladder. So it reduces the number of people to get the task done if you only have a ladder truck versus using actual ladders.
Chief, if I can.
Yep.
You should, that's the first truck out?
For any structure fire.
Structure fire, okay. I was just gonna ask about.
Yeah.
Car accidents.
No.
I, I just, I'm sorry, first truck out is the one.
First truck for structure fires. So we have a protocol at the fire hall, like what trucks leave. We have a big tagboard system of pictures. So as a call comes in, if it's a car accident, a structure fire, water rescue, we have it all predetermined on what trucks leave in what order. So like on a car accident, a different truck always leaves. So even our current truck that's up there doesn't go to a car accident. It only goes to structure fires. But I just wanted to make that, because a lot of the fire departments don't run their ladder truck engine first truck out. They, they'll run a different truck, a different engine out first. So we're trying to combine and just take one truck and go versus taking two. You still need to take two for a backup engine, but. Anybody else got questions? Just interrupt me as we're going through. Safety of it, again, like we talked, won't use a multiple elevator platform. Being hired up, it's just safer to be in a basket. You do have a tether on, so you're tied off inside of there. So when you're up there, you're not just free, free, you're tied in. Safety, I could like talk on the roofs and stuff. And just the, the dangers being up on a roof for injury and possible death if somebody falls off. And working, working conversation and death, of course, could be very high risk working off ladders versus being in a bucket. So here's a picture I put in there. So typically, there's the three people. So that's how we currently get up onto our roof. Usually have three people doing that. And with a ladder truck, you have one guy up there going right up top right away. Anybody got questions at that? I don't wanna bore you guys. This picture, the top left picture is actually what it, the inside of the bucket looks like. That, on this style of truck, it holds seven hundred pounds. So realistically, you get two guys in there with the equipment. The fire gear that we wear, you gotta add about thirty to forty pounds onto us. So you put that on top of the fireman's weight and some tools, you're maxed out at about two. And the lower left picture, you can still walk up the ladder, like the old traditional style ladder. You can still walk up. Back here, there's a, I can't go on the screen, but the back part of the bucket there, there's a door. You can open up and actually get inside, so you don't have to come to the ground. The right picture, you guys probably can figure that out, that was a fire we just had, the Spring. We had some anomalies ladder truck. That is a heavy duty ladder. That's a tandem axle, big stick. But typically, the ladder part's gonna be, you know, just bigger. They can haul more cargo in the bucket. The outriggers, you see there's four. Ours have only have three. So there's a little, a few differences there.
So the one, the one you're proposing or how high?
It's a hundred and ten foot stick.
Hundred and ten foot, okay.
But the ladder itself can go a hundred and ten.
How big is this one?
This is probably a hundred footer. But it's just.
So there's no difference in the ladder percentage, full length, yeah?
But the, the duty, the duty of the ladder is heavier. So they, they probably have like a thousand, twelve hundred rating in their bucket versus we only have like seven hundred. There's different grades of the ladder. We're looking, they have two grades, medium duty, they call it medium duty. So it's, we're looking at the cheaper, just a medium duty, not the heavy duty. The heavy duty's just thicker gauge steel, more iron in it to support the weight out at the end.
I'm guessing with anything that telescopes and like anything else, you can't go at a hundred and twenty feet or a hundred and ten feet horizontal?
Yeah, yeah, they can go straight out. You can take it all the way up and all the way down.
Can actually go below again?
Yeah, it goes like, it might be on the slide here, I can't remember. I think it's ten degrees negative or seven degrees negative. We can go below grade.
And you got three stabilizers rather than four?
Yeah, yeah, because the ladder's lighter, so it won't take as much. So it'd have, if you can see in the picture, it's kind of hard, but the front two stabilizers would be the same, identical. But instead in the back, having two, there'd be one in the center. Yeah. In the picture, they're, they're looking at, for us to get up on top of that would be, I don't even know if we could hit the top of that. It's our tallest ladder, it's only a thirty-five foot ladder. And we need to be two runs above, so we can physically really only get on like a thirty-three foot building. And I'm assuming that's probably higher than thirty-three feet. I haven't measured it, but. So typically, we couldn't even gotten up onto the rooftop unless there's a, some of the old buildings do have attic accesses. Some don't, so. If we can get into it and up in there from the inside, which if it's fully engulfed, of course we can. One of the questions that got brought up is for using the truck and going to mutual aid and maybe this call. So where we go help people, people help us. So if somebody requests an engine, like I said, this truck would go first on all our calls. But if we went somewhere else, we wouldn't take the ladder to it. We'd just take our backup engine and that truck would stay here unless they requested the ladder. So we're not gonna run it as a main, main truck going to all these other calls. We're gonna hold it back unless they request it. And the next part there, the ladder requested, it can be denied. So anytime we feel the need or staffing issues, we can always deny the call. We don't like to, but you can. Not saying we can't. And then on mutual aid calls, to keep the staffing levels down, we would probably only run with four versus six that we went on our own calls. Because when you mutual aid with a ladder truck, you're gonna, pretty much them four guys are gonna stay with the ladder truck. That's how all the departments operate. When you come on scene with a ladder truck, it's not like coming with a normal truck. Our guys can go work with other guys and people kind of work wherever they get assigned to work. Which, when you bring a ladder truck, you stay with your truck because it's a high dollar piece of equipment and you want your own guys to run in your own, your own truck. So that's why we bumped down from six to four to also help with wages, you know. Just a little bit of info on the bottom there, nearby, so Oakley Fire's got a hundred footer. About forty-five minutes, thirty-one miles. They're a career department, so they're around all the time. Manali Fire, that's the one we had in the picture again, is a hundred foot. It's be about thirty minutes, twenty miles for them to get here. And then Ellsworth has a smaller ladder yet and that's a seventy-five foot ladder. It's about a fifty-five minute response. I figured, they're not full time, Ellsworth, Manali and Oakley are. One I did forget to put on here, Spring Valley also has a, an older, pretty old ladder. Lund does not, that was a question I think got brought up in the meeting that I didn't add to this. Lund, back in the day, used to have a ladder truck, way back when, I got it donated to him. That currently is out of service for, I don't know, four or five years now. The, the maintenance, I don't know, something happened to it, but it was an old truck, they just got donated to him. A little history, that was one thing somebody had asked for, so I threw it in here. So twenty seventeen, we had seventeen structure fires. I didn't have a dollar on it, but twenty eighteen. So this is just structured fires. That was one of the questions. I know everybody sees the run reports at the end of the year where we have sixty to a hundred calls a year. They wanted it broke down, so this is just structure fires that we go on. Twenty eighteen, they're listed there, fourteen for eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. Twenty nineteen, we had six, but it was one point two. That was a large diesel repair shop in O'Gale, that top mechanic shop fire. Twenty twenty, we had sixteen structure fires for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And twenty twenty-one, that's this year, and that was the building in town here. And now, I didn't add them other pictures, but we just had Oakley Fire's ladder down here. Oh, um, that Lionel or Alvin? Uh, Lionel, yeah. That Amish three shed fire, I'm sure you guys all seen them. I did a press release on that. But that's gonna be a very, I can't remember the dollar on it, but that's, was a very high dollar. So there's two times this year that we already have a ladder truck in, which is kind of rare to have something that back to back so close. But anything, anything's possible. Not gonna bore you with this, guys, but it's just a lot of locations out in the rural. Just, but there's a lot of stuff, a lot of big buildings out in the, out in the rural. We know there's big buildings in the city, but there's also big buildings out in, out in the rural. The city stuff, I'm sure you guys pretty much know what's in town here, but we made a big list. Anybody need more time? I was able to throw it. That was something Scott had asked about. So back in twenty sixteen, we actually did a, a long-term capital outlay plan. We'll go back through, so it was done in twenty sixteen. So in two years, we were asking for the, what was it on there? Oh, the seal code in the parking lot.
There's a glare from away there, I can't read.
That we done, actually, last year, two years ago. So that actually was to wait a little bit. The next, in the five year, we had a ladder truck, which that didn't happen. And here we are, two years later. Turnout gear, which we're on track with that. And the trials of life, which the Fire Department Fund bought that with probably four years ago, so that was on track. Ten-year plan. Where we had, that'd be a new, another new truck, turnout gear and air packs and then a fire hall addition in twenty, twenty year plan. So that'd be in twenty thirty-six. That was just something they asked, Scott had asked if we even had a plan and Josh did make that with us back in twenty sixteen. But pretty much, we're really close to being on track with everything that got bought. Most of the stuff did come out of the city money. It actually all come out of fundraiser money. A lot of it did. Seal code, of course, didn't happen. The air pack stuff, the hose, some of the air pack stuff came from the city. The turnout gear, which is split now three ways, but I got another slide at the end with the money stuff here. This is a common question I get a lot. Nobody, nobody knows who owns what at the fire hall and how it all breaks down. So I'll start on the left is what the city of Duran owns. So the city of Duran owns three trucks, only fifty percent. So two engines and our squad, our heavy rescue. And the engine, where it says engine eleven, that was purchased in nineteen ninety-three. That's the one we're looking at replacing. The squad was purchased in two thousand and two and engine twelve was purchased in two thousand and six. So all three of them trucks that the city has, the rural also owns fifty percent. The city owns zero trucks fully on their own. If we switch over to the right-hand side, the rural fire department owns fifty percent of the three trucks I just talked about. And then at the bottom there, the, the rural owns a hundred percent of them, another five trucks, a hundred percent solely paid for by themselves. Does anybody got questions on that? I know I get asked on that quite frequently. And if anybody wants copies of this, I did not bring one tonight. I left the last ones at the Lamont Hall. But I can make copies of this for you.
I'll just say regarding this, you know, this piece, and I think it's fair to say when we get to the budget discussion for, for public safety, we'll have this updated, probably have Jamie update the previous slide as well for, we'll have that broken down a little bit better for you. It does have some implications, which I'll discuss later on, on the financing piece.
For, oh, the new truck?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, this has nothing to do with the new truck. This is, I call it just history.
It, it kind of does, but we'll.
It does, yeah. But this is currently the way we sit.
Yep.
Yeah, currently the way we sit, this is just the history of what's sitting there today with all the new, what Scott's gonna propose later on here. Everybody, this is the highlight to everybody's night. What's the cost? They're looking about one point two five. And that's before, this slide was made before Scott's new, and the rural's new way of looking to split things up. So this was proposed before that. So the way it sits is today's contract for the things that the city and the rural goes back and forth, it would've been split, which that's what Scott's gonna talk a little later. Would've been five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars each after the relief association outfitting. So the engine, so the other thing is, if we didn't buy a ladder truck, how much would the engine cost? It'd be about estimated, that's a rough number of eight hundred and fifty thousand for the red part of the truck. You add the ladder, it's about, do the math, about four hundred thousand extra. Ladder truck outfitting, so the outfitting part would be ladders, hose, nozzles, all the hand tools. All that stuff, the fire department nonprofit, our fire relief association for the fundraiser we're having coming up, where we get our funding. We've been saving, the last four years, we've been tucking twenty-five thousand dollars away for the past four years. So if we buy a ladder truck, we're willing to offset the cost and donate a hundred thousand dollars to the cause of the truck, the ladder truck. So that takes the price difference from four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars down to three hundred thousand. And it'd be broken down again, if it was fifty-fifty. Not soon to be determined yet, but it'd be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional from a normal truck to a ladder truck. One thing I did get a question on is about the maintenance, yearly maintenance on it. So either way, you have to test the pump in the truck, every, we do all of our trucks. That pump test is the same price if it's a ladder truck or if a regular engine. But it is an extra thousand dollars a year to certify the ladder. So it'd be an extra thousand bucks a year to do the ladder service, make a maintenance and service to it. It's more of an inspection to make sure everything's up to date. So it'd be an additional thousand. A regular pump test is only about three hundred, three to five hundred, I think they're on.
Difference in price between high, heavy duty and this?
Oh.
Is it a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand?
I mean, the top, I mean, you can buy a ladder truck over two hundred dollars.
But the ladder itself, is it a piece of roughly four and a half?
Yeah, I don't know what it would be.
But you may not be able to put a heavy duty ladder on a single axle.
We don't want a heavy duty. The reason, I'll go back a little bit. So the reason we want a medium duty is to see the background picture of the truck is a single axle. We were on and on that, like I said, as a first truck out. We wanna be able to get in to everybody's driveways yet. But you get the bigger ladder tandem axle, that adds, increases the overall length of the truck majorly. And we wanna keep it smaller, shorter, so we can still access everything that we're access.
And this fits in the fire hall?
It'll fit in.
With the other one?
Yeah, there's, the height is, it'll be fine. We'll have to move some trucks around.
Make sure.
It's, am I being listening?
We'll, we'll make it fit.
Really trying to hang out.
We'll just saw a hole in the garage door.
Yeah.
That's what it, it was, it fits. So, any questions on that a little bit? I got the more pricing here. Lease numbers, uh, it's started off. So I think it's, can you look there on the screen there? Is it one point nine, two seven?
Why the two point?
Can you see on the, here on the screen?
On the low screen.
On the low screen, up the low there.
It says one point nine zero, two point, two seven, two point seven eight and three point zero four.
Oh, my.
It got brought up about buying versus purchasing, so I had him run some numbers.
I, please.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, purchasing versus lease. So he ran these numbers through PNC Equipment Finance. It's pretty much who he said everybody uses. If you wanted to do it on your own, they have no problem you going to find your own lease company. It's just who they partner with, that's got the five, seven, ten, twelve year lease amounts there.
How long do you anticipate us having this ladder truck in?
I, we try to do a thirty-year rotation. So that nineteen ninety-three truck is why we're asking for a truck. Yeah, so it's a thirty-year investment is what we're, got the truck rotation. Yeah, so it's a 30-year investment is what we're, uh, got the truck rotation on. We try to. I know funding is short in every place you go to, but, I mean, it's 30 years on the truck is getting up there. And I know that everybody's challenge to that is, well, they're 30 years old, but they only got 12,000 miles on them. Well, they, they're still a 30-year-old truck, all the electronics are 30 years old, every, all the stuff in the truck is still 30 years old, even though it's only got 12,000 miles. A lot of that stuff too is, if you don't use it, it seals, dry out, it still deteriorates over time.
But we've already started determining that, the way the city does the budget leasing is not.
The way the lending works.
It does not work in our favor, it does not work in our favor.
Are there lease grants out there available for this thing, or is there?
We've been trying for seven years, five years, seven years. Yeah. The, if, it's a F G grant through FEMA, uh, after, I think it was 9/11, I think, because then it all kinda really ramped up. And that stuff has gone pretty much to the wayside. It's still there, we can still apply, they still give away the money, but for the last, I guess, three years, hardly came ever to one of the departments. We cashed in on that grant twice. We got a radio grant for 80,000 through them, and then we also got, um, we could get another grant.
Will we get the previous air packs?
Yeah, with the previous air packs. Yeah, and then, uh, so we cashed in twice, but, and the thing is too, is they've kinda gone away from giving trucks away. So they, when you apply for the grant, there's categories from top to bottom. And a ladder truck's not up here. If we're asking for turnout gear and boots and gloves, and we can't afford to buy them, that's up on top. And that's what we.
One thing, one thing on the grants too, you don't score as many points if you're trying to buy something you don't have versus trying to buy, trying to replace something you currently have. So they score higher for people that are trying to, that currently have one, that's 30 years old, that they're trying to replace versus somebody just randomly buying one.
Yeah, we're trying to have one.
When we are replacing, we're still a ladder.
Yeah. So a lot of the trucks too, that are getting replaced, so with, they call them vehicle, vehicles on the grant, so if the vehicle is, doesn't have seatbelts, so if they're pre-whatever year the trucks were built, that score is high. There's actually fire departments that still have open cabs. Back in the olden days, they never had a cab, or half a cab, tire was open, them score high. So it's, them are the people that are getting truck grants, or like tender water trucks that were a milk truck at one time, and they just threw a chassis under it, it's not a true spec fire truck, that's getting their funding for them. So it's not actually just, you know, easiest thing to do. We've been applying the for the last couple of years, and it's, it's just not happening. And we actually, three years ago, we actually left our department grant and turned it into a regional grant, and we applied with, uh, we combined Pepin and Buffalo, all the fire departments in one, they call it a regional grant, so we could score, try to score higher because then the truck would serve two counties, because there's not a ladder truck in Pepin or Pierce County, there's not, there isn't one.
Yeah, Buffalo.
Yeah, no, sorry, Buffalo. Yes. So we went and expanded and switched and wrote, it's through the same grant system, but you just fill out different paperwork. And we actually went to a regional grant so we could score higher, and that's still, last three years has been turned down. So we've exhausted pretty much every trick we could.
Jamie, do we look at other, I see Pierce, I don't know if there are 10 companies that make, that make these trucks or, or one. Do we get bids, do we look at other?
We, we could. Um, Pierce is the number one, uh, manufacturer out there for ladder trucks. They're made in Wisconsin, over Noshkosh, service is right here, parts appear here. There is, uh, Rosenbauer started making them, uh, there's a few other, Seagrave makes one. We could exhaust, but the problem is trying to, this truck that they make with ladder, with the single axle, not all them companies make. They just actually started building this truck like, we actually got one of the first demos up here like five years ago. So the more light-duty single axle is new to the fire service. It's not something that's been around. So all the, all the companies out there that built these trucks haven't even went down that lane yet to produce them. So we're, we're pretty much limited, from what I know, to maybe two vendors, maybe three. I'd have to do more research, but, but this company is the first one that's been out, and beyond that, they, they are by far the, the number one company out there with the number of trucks built.
But what do we do with the old one, that we're, that we're replacing?
The old one will go to wherever, wherever you can buy it. It'll go to probably the surplus auction, or there's, now there's getting to be companies out there that do consignment, so you can consign it to a fire truck, a thing, they have magazines, websites, blah, 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 they sell it for you.
Is that like the ambulance, that's, is this, is this something someone else is gonna buy and use?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, our last, our last truck is sitting up by Downsville, a farmer guy bought it.
Oh, yeah.
The old salad yard on the right there, that brown building, he had bought it, sits in the bullshit, I don't know. The old engine, the old green 813. Yeah. Yeah, the last tender we built, we actually traded the tank in, because they wanted the tank, and we sold the chassis to, I think it was a farmer down in Maxville, actually. Yeah, it's, there's not a lot of value, that's, somebody asked me at one of the meetings too, what's our old truck worth? Whatever anybody's willing to pay. It's a 30-year-old truck, so it's.
And there's certain things about it that just don't lend itself.
It's still, yeah, that truck is a manual, which is against NFPA, which is illegal now. Not illegal, it's grandfathered in, because that's the way it's billed, but none of the trucks are manuals anymore. So it's the new generation of firefighters coming in, a hundred guy sticks. So we're gonna be upgrading there, you know, to a man, an automatic. We still currently have three trucks that are manuals up there, so.
And only four people have to drive it.
Oh, we gotta, luckily, knock on wood, we do have a lot of truck drivers on the bike side, so. But yeah. Uh, just a little about, I think this is the last slide, but, uh, there's always some questions with the relief association, all the fundraising we do. Uh, it's always spent 100% back to the department, and, uh, there's a list of some of the gear and stuff that we actually have purchased over the, um, last, like, what was it, Matt? We, eighth year, I think we figured out last month?
Yep.
This'll be the eighth year that we've been doing this. Um, so there's tools about historically, I think most of you know, but I'm counseling enough, so any of the larger projects, we've been funding a third with you guys and the rural. So a lot of that's been cut, instead of half, it's been down to a third. And at the bottom, it's just the, uh, that's like best guess of what we come up with, that we've, um, reboot off of the city and the rural, off 100% fire, fireman fundraising. Does anybody want a copy of that? Anybody?
And, uh, so what we're basically looking at, um, you had mentioned that the price increased because of steel and everything else. But we're, we're looking at this final decision to be made by January.
Yes.
And can you explain why?
So, the, I didn't, but if we pay by January, pay, so a decision should be made in the center, and that we can get that money. So that secures a spot in their manufacturing. We put a down payment down, and then they can secure us a spot, and it also locks us into a cheaper rate. Where if you don't give them any money upfront until the end of the production, so a year later, the cost is like $30,000 increase if we put, uh, some money down. And you can, there's money savings breakdown too, that I can bring when we actually sit down, one part of it, but if you pay when the chassis is done, you pay when the body's done, you pay when the ladder's put on, you can break their installments down, and the more installments you give them, the cheaper the, they knock money off. Because then they're not supporting the cost of all the materials, you're paying for the materials as they're building the truck. And it's about, uh, a, a year to build one from the time you order, and it takes, I want it a half a year, but I'm not gonna get a half a year to spec one out, um, just to be able to go to other departments, see what they like, don't like. Uh, the closest department that just got one was Old Clark, got one very similar to the same thing, they're running right in the city. They just took delivery about a year ago, I think. But there's the, something similar to ours, but we can, it just takes a lot of time to go out and see what works, don't work, what they like, what they don't like, what fits our needs, what fits in our budget, of course. It's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work, a lot of work to, to build a truck and get what you, what you want, and also what fits the budget.
So do you have a committee of?
We will.
Next number of fields?
We will. Every truck we buy, any large project we have, we always have a committee. And any department member is welcome to be on the committee. And then we'll have, one guy chairs the committee, and then I oversee. So it's, so yeah, it's, it'll still be, to push it, to fast track, it's still gonna take, I'm gonna guess, three months, even fast track, to get down on paper what, what we, will fit, fit for us.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Okay, the ministry were asking if you wanna talk about the financing. This is something that we, we had put in, we knew it was coming up, and we talked about our long-term, uh, debt, and then we were going to, but how does it now fit in? Obviously, I know you've had conversations with the rural fire, and just updating where we're at with that.
I just had one, actually, one minor correction for the chief. Pierce Manufacturing is in Hamilton, it's my hometown.
Yes.
Okay. The truck is built in Oshkosh.
Is it built in, okay, but their facility's there.
Yeah, they're.
Okay, we're both.
Okay.
That little plug in. Okay, so I, I've shared with the committee that we've had, obviously, discussions, Jamie and I and Don are, um, regarding, uh, you know, basically, our push for potentially a district, and, and fair to say, as I said several times, um, that's not likely to happen. So then we started working on some of these issues that we've had. Obviously, the salary, you know, situation, um, you know, that piece, the, the rent situation up at the fire hall, and the final one is basically the split of, of capital purchases in the future. Um, so, you know, in that discussion, as I shared with you last time we met, you know, the three of us, it went well enough. Um, we did, Don did discuss that the last rural meeting, about a month plus ago. Um, I don't know if you've heard any, any objections that come back from that, I have heard of, of none. Um, but, you know, Don basically laid it out for the rest of the, the townships, that, that we were pursuing a potential agreement for, um, and I think the numbers that were thrown out there was like a 70/30 split, rural-city, or 30/70, city-rural, um, you know, in this standpoint of both the number of calls, roughly about 30%, to 70%, and then also the equalized value. The equalized value was actually just a little bit less, it's more along the lines of maybe 25%. However, um, you know, one of the things that my predecessor did as well is, you know, clearly, an equalized value doesn't include the school here, the county building, our building, the churches, so clearly we have probably more in coverage. So if you tack that on, it probably is closer to a 30, 30/70 split. So if we go under that guise, if that, if we can make that work out, there's two pieces to it. And one of the things that Jamie pointed out, those vehicles that were purchased either exclusively by rural or, or 50/50 with the city. So what was pointed out, I think from the first time that we met with Don, that I met with Don, was, well, if you ever do this, you guys, you know, you're gonna have to buy in, because you're gonna owe us more, and so, you know, that, that's, you know, it's probably gonna cost you more in the end. But when we finally got that on paper, and the way we have it kinda split out between, yes, what we would have to buy in for those, all those vehicles that Jamie showed earlier, that were purchased 100% by rural, we would owe 30% of, right, of the remaining value. Um, but conversely, for those 50/50 splits, rural would also wanna owe us an additional 20% of those, because we would've had to split at 30/70. Makes sense? So basically, in looking at that, what I've come up with, and we haven't talked about, this is just kinda what I've come up with at this point, it's looked like the city would probably, the city buying in, if you will, for all the vehicles, would be about $85,000. Okay, so, so if you go back and look at what Jamie's presenting, 575 each, want to take that million, 150, if that were 30%, that's 345,000. Plus that 85,000 means the city would essentially, their total buy-in with the ladder truck and everything else, be about 430,000 versus 575. So, you know, we're on the bat, we're, we're doing better. Now, this is nothing, again, this hasn't been shared with rural at this point, this is, this is just, you know, basically, kinda walking through this.
And also, we'll be participating in buying a new tender, or whatever.
Well, you're clearly, and again, I mean, very clear, that, yeah, and he doesn't, you know, in the case of, hey, it's a tender that's almost used exclusively in rural, we're still on the hook for 30, that's how this agreement worked.
Yeah. And same with maintenance?
Well, again, that was the idea, and when Jamie talked about the $1,000 maintenance, that would be split at some level too, whether it would be at this, the 30/70 or.
But I'd put obedience on all of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. And there's already a split, but it's kind of all over the board.
60/40.
Yeah, 60/40 at this point, and so would that move to 30/70 as well? I guess I'd make the case it probably should. But, you know, more stuff for us to talk about there. Um, so, you know, back to that ordering piece, if, and I know the rural's meeting in October, and, um, I don't know if they can make a decision at that point, or if they have to wait for their annual meeting, I don't know, but that, that may affect when, when this gets ordered, clearly, unless we have some sort of preliminary agreement or.
They'd probably have a special meeting.
Yeah, or something to that effect, but, um.
And as far as, whatever our share would be at the end of the day, um, uh, we would obviously look at, would we buy this, or would we just loan, or?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's kinda the question at this point, um, frankly, we probably wouldn't go out in that, for that long money.
You wouldn't buy it, you would have to, and again, as we said, but it fits into our plan.
Well, it's, it was included on, on the schedule.
On the schedule, so it isn't like, it's not like all of a sudden that, that we were gonna do that. It was interesting, I was talking to somebody from the public back, in fact, this was Blues Weekend, and somebody said about, they were under the impression that we were just buying a ladder truck, uh, uh, because we wanted a ladder truck, and I said, well, no, first of all, we're replacing a 30-year-old truck here. You know, and they said, we are? Oh, I just saw, we're adding something to the fleet, I said, no, no, it's just that, just that we're trying to decide about putting the ladder on there and what, what it is. So it's not like, you know, we're, we're doing this just because we're gonna add something to the fleet, that we are replacing something, and the question is, so that was interesting. And after I explained everything to them, they actually said, oh, okay, then it made a little more sense, but.
And, and I want to make clear tonight, I'm, I'm not presupposing that we're just buying this at this point. Clearly, there will be further discussion during the budget discussion through public safety, you know, whether it's this year or another year, I guess I would just point also that, uh, in going back through, and Jamie pointed out, the, the past vehicles that were purchased. So the last time the city was involved in a purchase was 2006.
Yeah.
So 15 years.
Beyond that, though, like Scott was saying, you'd be on hook for 30% of the next three trucks, will probably be all rural trucks, and that's gonna be, you know, 300,000 probably for truck, their, for tenders. So it's another crack of 100, 100,000 in probably five years.
Yep. You said, you said the last year, Matt, I didn't know that, the tenders are used in the city?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, depending on what, if it's a small house fire, if it's a downtown fire, yes. You know, if, if we can get to the boat landing, maybe, maybe not, depending on what you have for trucks. Depends where the fire is. At the hospital, you're not gonna get no homes from the river to hospital, so all the, all the trucks.
So, the one thing in our advantage compared to rural, of course, is we meet twice a month, so we're always meeting. With them, if, if, you know, we sit down and talk about this, and if come up with something that's agreeable to them by October, of course, we're in a bunch of process we're going through, and we'll be able to, um, that, to try to say if we're going to meet, making that decision within a few months after that, before the end of the year, feasible?
I, I think so, I mean, but it's certainly a little discussion we'd have had, and see what, what we might be able to work through. I mean, it's, clearly, if they had a while, you know, a while we've had discussion, and we don't think we should keep it at 50/50, that's a whole other discussion. At our level.
Should we have a sheet breaking down prices for the next 20 years?
Well, and that, I was gonna just, and that, to Jamie's point of the next, that it was a capital, look at the next, and what proportions would be and how much. I think for those, those tenders are cheaper than engines, clearly, but, you know, but just a better idea of what we might be looking at in the future of this.
As they said, I think it was important for everyone in council to hear this, that's, I think it's, a couple of us have been, sort of been through this, but there's always some new information as we're going, everybody's got some opportunity to sort of think about this. Obviously, I think there'll be other questions, as we said, we're going to go through this process, everybody have an opportunity. And whether it's a question about need, whether it's a question about financing, whether it's a question about, um, exactly the arrangement with rural, I mean, all of us, as we continue to work on those, to get to this, through this decision-making process. As I said, we don't have to make it tomorrow, but again, we need to start working our way through and, and making this, as I said, to say, trying to get this done by the end of the year, at least a decision on how we're going to go forward.
I think a couple more meetings with Don, I think Scott, we should have, just to help speed their side of things up.
Well, just make sure.
If we just go to their next meeting, it's going to be, well, if you have anything on paper, close, where Scott and Don can kind of, I know Don can only speak for himself as a president, and he's got ten other townships he's got to represent, but if they can get somewhat close to a, of something to present to them, that way we're not starting from scratch going into the meeting, I think that would help speed the process.
And of course, one thing with them, they have a different way of financing, just because of the way their organization is compared to us, who are coming and saying, this will be the number, this is how we're going to finance our portion of it, that's, it's a little bit different ballgame for the townships. Okay, any other questions? If not, Jamie, thank you very much. As I said, we'll continue the, continue the conversation. Anything for ambulance?
No updates for ambulance.
Okay, public works, engineers report, Russ?
Yes, a quick short report update on the construction projects. A few weeks ago, curb and gutter was poured, and on Monday, if you haven't been by the project, it's starting to look like a street project now. The hot mix asphalt floor binder course was placed on Monday. Well, that looks good. Remaining work on the thru道project with A1, and their subcontractor will be concrete driveway aprons, the concrete sidewalk, and then there's some decorative repainting wall work. Once that work is done, then they'll come back and do the surface course of asphalt and then asphalt in the driveways. So getting close to the end of the project, so. Would assume it'll take two, two weeks or so for the driveway to get poured, the sidewalk. Skidster guy is actually hired by A1 to do the retaining walls. They were supposed to be out this week, they had some rain days, and they have a couple employees unfortunately out COVID, so they didn't get in to do the retaining walls, so hopefully they can get in next week and do the retaining wall. So it'll start looking a little bit better too, once we get the sidewalk in and driveways and so forth. So again, continues to be ahead of schedule. The other project, Laneville and Dryer, with Skidster guy, um, it probably got maybe another week or so of water and sewer laterals. So that will then complete the water main, sanitary water sewer laterals, and then, in a week or so, they'll be starting on the storm sewer work. So I'd estimate they got maybe two weeks or so of storm sewer, sanitary sewer lateral work, and then they'll bring in another crew behind them, once they get far enough with the storm sewer, start putting gravel down, and then scheduling the curb and gutter for Laneville and Dryer. So that project is still pretty close, I would say, they're still on schedule for the contract for middle of October, end of October. So supposed to get some more rain Thursday and Friday.
So if you, those dates in there, the biggest question I get, how close are we to having gravelled out on that part? I, this weekend I got it three times.
Yeah, it's probably at least two.
Three, four weeks.
Yeah, three, four weeks away from where they're at, so.
I got it three or four times over the weekend, so.
That's because it's a hell of a.
Well, I know what it is, I've driven through it, I've driven through it.
And the other, the other scheduling item we were worried about, but XL came through with their subcontractor Michael's, they have all the power poles relocated on Laneville, we're sweating that out a little bit. Whether, when they were going to get in and get the power poles moved, because that would have delayed some of the storm sewer work and the curb and gutter. So XL and their subcontractors not delaying anything on the project, so. A lot of better idea, we have a update progress meeting with Skidster guy, get an update on their schedule. Again, on both projects, I mentioned, you know, the curb and gutter and the concrete work, it's all by Sampson Concrete. So that's a subcontractor, so everyone's at his mercy in terms of scheduling and getting out through the curb and sidewalk and flatwork, so. But that's their job to push their subcontract, keep on scheduling. The outlet from, as part of the water main loop, Skidster guy completed today that outlet pipe for the reservoir overflow. They completed that today, so that works. Done now, except for a support bracket, so. So keep your fingers crossed, we don't get too much rain, sounds like get quite a bit on Thursday and Friday. Between those two days, three to four inches of rain, so. So which is nice that we got the asphalt on third, we won't see the washouts and the erosion. Everything will go into the storm sewer now in the curb and gutter. We do have some boulevard areas that we might get some washouts on, but it won't be as, as bad as it's been with the heavy rain. That's all I have, anyone else has questions?
Any questions, senior engineer? Hey, about the report, Superintendent Gillis?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, I just want to walk through the swimming pool inspection that we had essentially a week and a half ago on Friday. So we did end up with a total of fourteen violations. The good news is they're pretty minor violations, with only two of them being mild to major. By minor, what I mean is, uh, so our test kits, what we use, the, the agent that we use to test for cornering and stuff, they actually expired on July thirty-first, so I didn't want to buy a new one, so I was pushing it through to the middle of the month, which they're still good. They just have an expiration date. So you got to thank for that. Just a couple other things, like, uh, we're supposed to test combined cornering twice a week, we only do it once a week. We're supposed to do a civic alkalinity twice a week, or we only do it once a week. Some rules, some of the signs just need to be updated, some rules need to be added to signs, pretty minor things like that. Uh, the major things, a couple other minor things, where the, got to be an address, the pool address has to be posted on the wall next to the telephone. The drinking fountain got shut off and wasn't working, so just again, had to go turn the valve. A lot, a lot of minor things. Uh, the couple major things that we got brought up on was, um, we got fourteen days to correct the, the security issue. So code says, uh, the locker room, where you walk out of the locker room onto the pool deck, code says that that door has to be self-closing and self-closing and self-latching. Um, our doors are currently not that. So that, since that's a major safety concern, they give you fourteen days to correct that. Fortunately, we can apply for a variance, being that we are staffed within, we have one main entrance to the pool, right side of that entrance is the pool attendant. So being that we always have a pool attendant on staff and we always have lifeguards when the pool is in operation, um, if, if the pool is not had lifeguards or attendant, we're always locked and closed. So being that we have physical attendants and lifeguards, we can apply for a variance for that, uh, because it'd be, probably get pretty expensive for us to put new doors, self, self-locking and latching doors in there. So good news is, I, I did apply for that variance, and this morning I did get, uh, I did get, uh, acceptance of that variance. So we did get a variance for as long as this pool. The variance, I believe, is five years, every five years I'll have to, have to reapply for a variance, so the variance.
Hopefully, that five years is going to come into play.
So that has already been rectified. Uh, one of the other issues that we talked in length about was the turnover rate. So, um, the pool code requires the water in the pool to be turned over so often. Um, we have always ran on a six-hour turnover rate. The calculation that day was six point two hours, over point two over what we normally should be. That's basically a new impeller, the impeller's probably worn on, on the motor. So a new impeller, which I have in stock, throw that on, it will be under six. But as she was looking through code, um, we are considered an attraction, not a swimming pool, since we have a slide and a diving board, and the turnover rate of an attraction is two hours. Um, we're never going to achieve that, not possible. So basically, she did some more digging, we both kind of made some more phone calls and deemed that, uh, which I did get a confirmation email on that yesterday, um, where, I don't like to use the word grandfathered in, but, uh, that code was changed basically after our pool was built. So we will stay with our six over, six-hour turnover rate instead of the two hour, having to go down to a two-hour turnover rate. So that has basically rectified itself as well. Um, other than, other than those two, everything else is just pretty minor stuff that, it's paperwork.
By minor, you mean cheap?
Yeah, I mean, zero expense, zero expense.
Maybe those signs cost.
Actually, yeah, the, the one sign might cost a few hundred bucks. The other one is pretty much just as simple as, as a little painting, painting, no diving. But the one thing we got thinking on is, is the, the, it says no diving on the deck, but code says that it has to be incorporated onto the pool rules hanging on the wall. Um, so we kind of went back and forth on that a little bit, I mean, I just questioned this to the last time, the last person that was in. And code is always an interpretation of the person reading the code, right? So, um, the last person interpreted that, because code does say that it has to be four-inch letters that say no diving. So the last person interpreted that it was good enough to be painted on the deck. This person actually reads the, read the code code in the last sentence, says incorporated on the, on the wall with the pool rules. So basically, this one's pretty simple, I, I just got to paint, no diving, essentially. Underneath or above the current sign that's there in four-inch letters, so it, uh, there's not a lot of, of, everything that we have to rectify is basically not going to cost us a few hundred bucks. Uh, she did say that, uh, she gave us a, you know, even though we do have fourteen violations, she gave us a pat on the back. Um, she's, the total time spent in our pool was two hours, forty-five minutes of that was doing this report. And, uh, she said, I have not done a pool in my tenure here, in my two years of service here, that has taken me less than five to six hours. So she basically gave us kind of a, down the boat, good job, all your paperwork's in order, you know, all the BGPA stuff, the lifeguard insurance, your staffing plans, you know, essentially all your paperwork and stuff is in order, and those are the things that take the longest of public inspections, so. Although it does look bad on paper that you got fourteen violations, she did say it was a very, the best pool inspection she's done in the last couple of years.
It's normal, say a health inspection or a restaurant.
So other than that, uh, other, everything up there is going well, as you all know, the pool is closed. Um, we're pumping it out now, pumping the basin out, and we'll be kind of slowly but surely winterizing it over the next couple of months here. Other than that, everything else in my department is staffed full.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
Well, sorry. Along with that comes a campground inspection too. So we did have like three violations in our campground, all pretty minor stuff, just had to make a couple signs and, and hang some, some signs on that as well, so. That is taken care of as well.
Any other questions for Public Works Utilities? Yeah, let's pay the bills. Mr. Rider, again, in future meetings, we are going to have a committee meeting for the economic bill prior to the next one, for the loan application. The other committees who obviously are meeting is necessary throughout the budget process.
Scott, when you were talking about the six forty oh seventeen, that was the payoff of the.
That's the payoff of the, of the remaining two state trust funds, a little more iterated.
A lot of people are baseballs. Anybody interested in that?
Just, I just want to keep you.
I'll always, I'll always look at it.
If you can be treated into any store credit or I am as well.
We're probably, I would say we have fifty left.
Okay, um, is that a big motion to approve the vouchers?
I want to pay the bills.
Go ahead.
I can go first, one second.
Yeah, it's good, one second.
Roll call, please.
Amber Hartman?
Yes.
Amber Hooker?
Yes.
Amber Raceler?
Yes.
Amber Schneider?
Yes.
Amber Schofield?
Yes.
Amber Gillis?
Yes.
Uh, any other future issues or agenda? Eric Dunn, is that a life big motion or adjourn?
Motion second, second.
All's on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no.
We are adjourned.